Okay, so it looks like we've got everyone to get started. So let me call this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency to order on Tuesday, October 27th. And we're getting an interesting echo effect, just so you're aware. And I will ask our city clerk if you could please do a roll call. Councilmember Deloso.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Lemon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Present.
Mayor Skelman. Here, thank you. Okay, and then if everyone could please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. So I'll move on to item four, approval of minutes from our last meeting on October 13th.
This is Councilmember Deloso, I'll move to approve.
This is Councilmember Harvey, I'll second that motion. Okay, we have a motion, a second, I'll ask Lauren, could you please take a roll call vote? Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skelman. Yes, thank you. All right, so I will move on to item number five, announcements. We begin with meeting orientation of new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any of the statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving a City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. Election Day is November 3rd. Vote by mail ballots for the November 3rd 2020 Consolidated General Election should have been received by all active registered voters in Sonoma County. Voters may return their vote by mail ballots in two ways. One, sending them back in the mail, no postage required, or two, taking them to one of the 20 ballot drop boxes installed throughout the county. Where voters who wish to vote in person will be able to do so at 30 in-person voting locations in the county between October 31st and Election Day. The City of Kattati's voting location is located at the Kattati Veterans Memorial Building at 8505 Park Avenue. For a full list of these voting locations, please visit sonomacounty.ca.gov/cra/register-of-voters. It is our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointment by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@kattatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels, available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. Next, we'll move to item number six, presentations. We're gonna have the October 2020 financial update, and that will be presented, I understand, by Angela Quarter, so I'll turn it over to you, Angela, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow members of the public. Just gonna request, put control of the slide deck, and then we'll get started. So at the council meeting, I'm just gonna rehash this again, the council meeting on June 23rd, you adopted our fiscal year 2020-21 budget, as well as the estimated balances for the fiscal year 1920. And those estimates were based on our projections of both revenues and expenditures as estimated at that time, which of course, we're still in that time. During the presentation of the budget summary, we also committed to council and to the public to continue to come back with timely updates for significant revenues. We then subsequently provided budget updates monthly, with a specific focus on the summary of the continued sales tax receipts received to date. The presentation tonight is slightly different, and that we want to provide a summary of the full year for fiscal year 2019-2020 for the general fund, as well as an update for the first quarter of the fiscal year now in 2021. So since publication of this packet, we did receive additional sales tax just this morning, and so I will just briefly describe that when we get to that sales tax receipt. But again, we just wanna focus on the Q1 as it was received. So this is a new type of report that we are presenting to council and our community as we're striving to provide continuous up-to-date financial information. First, we're gonna provide the financial summary of the unaudited balances for the full fiscal year 1920. We are currently working on the financial audit for this fiscal year, which started back in July 1, 2019, and ended June 30, 2020. And this is with our new auditors, Vadaoui and Associates. Once this audit is completed, we'll bring back to the council and the community our fully audited, comprehensive annual financial report, as well as that popular annual financial report. Beyond that historical information, we're also gonna present that summary of the Q1 unadjusted revenue and expenditures. So for fiscal year 1920, when comparing the amended budget to the actual results, the city received approximately 15% or 1.16 million more in receipts than was budgeted. This is primarily due to the conservative budgeting for sales tax and measure G, due to the uncertainty around COVID-19. Additionally, we had additional receipts in our other revenues that were unbudgeted as they are related to reimbursements that were unknown at that time. And these were primarily related to reimbursements for expenditures around the successor agency bond refinancing. There's also other revenues that are typically one-time charges for reimbursements that do not make up a core piece of our revenue portfolio or are part of our economic development strategy. So for fiscal year 1920, when comparing the amended budget to the actual results for the city's expenditures, there was approximately 15% or just over a half a million more or fewer expenditures than budgeted. This is primarily due to the delay and the timing of our strategic projects and programs or upgrades that we had planned across almost all of the departments due to COVID-19. We look forward to continuing to move these projects forward into 2021. Now with these changes in revenues and expenditures, we wanted to present to you a quick snapshot of what that means for our bottom-line fund balance. Based on our amended budget, we have projected a fund balance of approximately 5.2 million. With the increased revenues and decreased expenditures, we currently have an unaudited fund balance of 6.9 billion. Of course, we have a required reserve of 25% of the operating expenses, which would equate to 1.6 billion, leaving an operating reserve in excess of that requirement of approximately 5.2 million, which yes, is greater than even our projected ending fund balance for the amended budget for 1920. This reserve is what has allowed us to confidently propose to city council the proposals to move forward with the minimized street improvement projects and continue the investments in our city while the bidding environment was to our benefit. So how did this happen? Approximately 925,000 of the additional revenues were due to sales tax receipts. Sales tax and measure G is a primary revenue source for the general fund. And unlike other local jurisdictions, the sales tax that is made up for here in Kattati was not as dramatically impacted by COVID-19, primarily due to the positive offsets to the countywide pool, which was related to the new online retailers who have to report taxes to the jurisdiction where the sales is taking place, as well as the continued improvements in building and construction industries, and the stability of food and drug in our jurisdiction. While we do acknowledge that our sales tax receipts are showing, you know, not as significant impact as other jurisdictions, there are many other struggling businesses, and they're primarily around the fuel and service stations, as well as those restaurants and hotels. So that's where we were in 1920. So where are we now with the unadjusted Q1 balances for 2021? So when comparing the adopted budget to the Q1 actuals, the city's general fund has received in revenues just over 10% of our annual revenues. This is just behind our three-year average of Q1 of approximately 10.7%. The primary difference between the quarters for the revenue is due to the decreased rents and other charges for services, as many programs and rentals really couldn't happen due to COVID-19. So our sales tax and voter-approved local revenues, just as a reminder, payments that are made to the city are made by the CDTFA, and we receive them approximately two months after the period that those sales tax are collected for. So the sales tax that we adopted had an approximate monthly budget of 150,000, and we received approximately 200,000, meaning we were over budget by 61,000. And this is really consistent with the voter-approved local revenues, where we conservatively adopted a approximate monthly budget of 162,000, and we received approximately 225,000, leaving excess receipts of approximately 63,000. In total, due to conservative budgeting methods placed into practice, as well as projections for these unknowns, and making sure those take into account what's happening in the state, what deferral programs are available, and working with our consultants to track what's going on in trends, we did make sure that we had a buffer there, and we are accounting for these possible decreases in our sales tax that we have continued to exceed. But we will continue to meet with our consultants and track these trends and make sure that we are on target for where we project to be. So you might ask why our total revenues aren't at 25%, right? We're a quarter of the way through the year, why aren't we at 25% of the revenues? So it's really due to the timing of receipts, something in accounting that we do, which is accrual accounting, where we like to shove all the revenue that is for a certain period into the other period. So those two other months of receipts for sales tax that we have received in this quarter actually belongs to the other quarter, so we can't, in the last fiscal year, so we can't count them as quarter. Other things are the property tax receipts. We receive property tax receipts twice a year, once in December and once again in April. There are other trips that happen in June, but again, those are in the future. So, and then there's also licenses, permits, franchise, and revenues and other agency payments, and those are primarily paid in December, and then again, at the very end of the fiscal year. That was revenues, but what about expenses? So expenses are incurred when they're incurred. We still have to pay for personnel, even when the timing for the revenues happened previously, or we're not getting those revenues in yet. We still have employees that are here, hardworking projects that are ongoing, infrastructure that we're improving. So overall, city expenditures are in track, and when comparing the adopted budget to actuals, we're at approximately 23.5% of the budgeted expenditures. And due to the timing of the annualized expenses, we make every attempt to make sure those annual subscriptions and contracts, we always try and make sure that they renew and are concurrent with our fiscal year, so they do typically all come due within this first quarter. And so we do make those annual subscription payments here in this first quarter. We also have other expedited expenses that came up related to emergency services, as well as additional expenses that were delayed from 1920 and pushed into 2021. Remember that $50,000 reduction in expenditures that was due to timing in 1920? Well, this is, we're seeing some of that impact now in Q1 2021. So the departments that were not at that 25% mark, it's primarily due to vacancy rate and personnel where they were fully budgeted, as well as pending transfers for new capital projects that are now coming to completion and coming to council. That's our revenues and expenditures. So I also like to report out not just on what is happening with revenue expenditures, but what the overall city cash investments are, because it's really vital information since the city cannot function without a sufficient cash flow. So as of October 20th, the city continued to have over 15.6 million dollars in combined funds, of which just over 90% was invested according to our investment policy in order to earn a reasonable rate of return. So thank you, I just wanna end with kind of what's happening next. So I do wanna take a second to grab my department and Adamant Services, Neil, Angela, Sandra. We are working really hard too on our audit, and we worked so hard last year on our audit and on our CAFRA that we did win the CAFRA award, as well as the PAFRA award. We're really excited that we were able to obtain that again for a second year in a row. We're gonna continue to work on the audit currently, then produce again another quality CAFRA and PAFRA, and submit that to council. Once we have that CAFRA and we have our audit completed, we also have the Measure G Oversight Committee meeting, where we present out all the revenues and expenditures for Measure G, and that report also then comes to council. And then we're right back again at mid-year financial evaluation and our budget strategic planning session, so the whole cycle starts right back over again. So that's it for my presentation tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Angela, for the presentation, and it's great to see that there's continuing monitoring and that the conservative estimates have really worked in our favor as far as predicting an uncertain future at the time, and it's wonderful to get outside accolades as well, so congratulations on that to your department. Let me bring it to council, see if anybody just has any comments or anything, I know it's not an action item, but Councilmember Deloso, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. Angela, just a couple of questions and then one comment. And I've been seeing this in our monthly reports that you're giving to us regarding the online retail reporting taxes, how long has that been going on? I've seemed to have lost track.
So I believe that actually started the beginning of this calendar year, and so it was really just a good timing for us where they had to start that reporting just in a time where we probably would have seen a significant decline in our sales tax due to local sales tax receipts.
Got it, okay, I kinda seem to think it hadn't been going on too long, so, okay, so somewhere around the beginning of this year. And, you know, the numbers for the fiscal years 2019, 2020 look really good, both the expenditures and the revenues. You know, when I look at the revenues to see that we were about 115% to the good, back in my day, that would have been like an A+ if I'm not mistaken for a grade, so congratulations on that. And I would say, you know, due to the frugal spending policies that staff presented to council and council approved, here we are at the end of the fiscal year, a couple months ago, looking really good. So again, thank you for this good information, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and Councilmember Harvey, go ahead, please.
Yes, Angela, you said you've been working with the consultants, and I know we've been able to weather this, and we have held off on some projects and things. Have the consultants given you any insights into when things might start to look better, such that we can start reinvesting and moving forward some of those projects that we had to put a hold on?
So they are absolutely not sure, they're looking for things to hopefully pick up in the next, after this calendar year, but again, it is very uncertain. And again, we are, and maybe Jamie can pitch in here, but we are very anomalous compared to other municipalities that they are dealing with, because we do have a specific mix of our sales tax that are, just unlike other jurisdictions, we do not have the heavy hotels, tourism, we don't have the big auto dealerships, we don't rely on those type of sales tax. And so we do have a significantly different mix where it is still, like, we seem to be doing better per capita than other jurisdictions, but it's, everyone's still really, we don't know what's in store for this fall.
Yeah, and Councilmember Harvey, I'll also just add that when we talk to HDL, who does a lot of this forecasting across the state, just due to the nature of sales tax, which is a lagging, a lagging indicator, because you don't get, you don't get the reports of actual receipts for a couple months after the fact, and I think also, due to a little bit of uncertainty around delays and remitting sales tax, you know, via the state's programs for delaying submittal of sales tax for businesses, I think, you know, what I get from them mostly, and what Angela might get from them, is that they are looking primarily for trends, the start of trends, and, you know, they're speculating that, that things will recover, I mean, start recovering next calendar year, but it's gonna be obviously more dependent on that, on what jurisdiction and mix of sales tax and property tax in each individual jurisdiction, but they're, I think they're generally optimistic for things starting to recover in 2021, but I think they're hedging their bets until they see a more definitive trend, and because sales tax receipts are a couple months behind, yeah, you know, the date that we're in now, they haven't, that and the combination with the uncertainties around the COVID resurgence or not, is, you know, causes them to hedge their bets on where it's, or how quickly it's gonna recover.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a fine line, a balance between taking advantage of the good pricing that we can get to move some of these things forward, and then, you know, wanting to hold back money because we don't know what's gonna happen, because we've also seen in, in the past where we've been, you know, price gouged on things too. If, you know, you kind of wait till everybody's doing stuff, then you, you know, are paying a premium price. So I know it's kind of this fine balance with this magic crystal ball, but I'm just hoping that we can kind of stay ahead of that, since we have saved money to invest in the community, in particular in the infrastructure, to kind of keep that moving along, and hopefully we can, you know, get more advantageous pricing on some of that. But thank you, hopefully someone, someone's crystal ball will be working better.
I hope, we could know more hopefully by mid-year and be able to make some informed decisions there.
Yeah, because I know, you know, sort of, we can't really do much with many projects in the wintertime anyways, so we're sort of at a, at a point where, where we can't really move much forward just because of the weather. But hopefully we'll kind of keep, keep ahead of that, so if things are looking better, we can, you know, jump out quickly in the spring as things open up, if it looks like, you know, the economy's doing a little bit better, but thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you for your questions, and I'll pause and just see if there are any other comments from council, I know it's a non-action item, but seeing none, just, I will ask Lauren to check and see if any of the attendees had comments on the fiscal updates. Thank you, Mayor Skelman. Just as a reminder to our attendees, to make a public comment, use the raised hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial nine, correction, dial star nine if you're using just your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number, and for the audible Zoom notification that you've been unneeded. At this time, Mayor Skelman, I see no raised hands. Okay, well, thank you very much for checking, I appreciate it. Next, we will move on to item seven, approval of final agenda. For that, I'll check in with our city manager, Sarah Bitt, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mayor, no proposed changes.
Okay, then we'll move on to item eight, citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. I'll read my quick bit of information here. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability combination has been requested. With that, I will ask our city clerk, could you please check with the attendees and see if there's any public comment or citizens' business? Mayor Skelman, at this time, no public comment. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on to item number nine, the consent calendar. And we have one item, the acceptance of the William Street and Ola Street sewer replacement project.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Deloso. Think I'm jumping on top of somebody, but I'll just keep going. I move to approve item eight on the consent calendar.
And do we have a second?
This is Vice Mayor Moore. I will second that.
Okay, terrific. We have a motion and a second. Uh, Lauren, could you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
She was starting to fade out earlier, so I'm wondering if there might be audito- auto, audio problem. There we go.
No, he bounced out.
Uh, well, there you are. And can I get your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skelman?
Yes, thank you. And see, now we know what happens when John Deloso's trying to make a motion. He kicks us out of the meeting. I'm just kidding, John. Okay.
I was wondering how that happened. It just totally kicked me out.
It's one of my secret powers.
Oh, dear. Okay. So we'll move on to item ten, uh, direction on future agenda items. I'll just pause to see if any of our councilmembers have anything they would like to put on in a future agenda. All right, seeing none. Oh, Vice Mayor Moore, please go ahead.
Um, it may be early, but I think that, uh, as we gather more information moving forward in our city, um, surveys that we're going to be doing, it might be appropriate to look at a, uh, potential, um, ad hoc committee for the, uh, uh, in reference to, uh, our city policing guidelines.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing any other hands. So we will move on to item eleven, our regular agenda. And we'll begin with item A, appointment of the library commissioner. And I'm not sure who's doing this presentation. Is it you, Damian?
For Mayor, I will, um, it's, it's really obviously a short presentation, but we, um, we are a member of the, uh, countywide library, JPA. And as part of that, we, um, make appointments. We, every city makes an appointment to the, um, library commission. And, uh, we had a commissioned vacancy, um, on the library JPA. And so we put that vacancy out, um, through multiple channels to advertise the vacancy. And we, um, we received an application, which is attached to the packet. And, um, uh, the, uh, individual that applied is also here tonight as an attendee to the meeting. So, um, I believe can, uh, a- answer any questions or speak to her background if that's, um, the desire of the council. Um, we've, like I said, we have the one application which is attached. And, um, the item tonight is to consider the applicant and, um, and decide if we want to appoint that individual to the library JPA commission. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I don't think there'll be any questions from the council, but I'll double check just to see, um, if anybody wants to put poor Rachel on the spot and ask her questions. Uh, Councilmember Deloso, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I have a list of about forty-five questions I'd like to run through if that's all right. So I'm going to get started. Just kidding. So, um, this is Parker. Uh, thank you, first of all, for submitting an application. Appreciate that. Um, I just kind of wanted to put out there in the ethosphere, uh, that, and I did this with the, the previous two appointees that we've done, um, that I'd love to have a conversation with you in the near future. And, um, and that's because I have a lot of experience on the library. I was on the commission for about six or seven years. Um, I helped do the fundraising and bring the money for the new library that's in Leonard Park. So I do have a vested interest in, uh, in the libraries and also painstakingly helped develop the JPA, uh, the Joint Powers Agreement that's in existence now, which allowed, for example, uh, the city of Cattati to actually have a member on that, um, board. So, um, if you are to be appointed this evening, um, I just wanted to throw that out there. And I can certainly, um, probably get ahold of your contact information from our city clerk and vice versa. She could certainly pass mine on to you. But just wanted to throw that out there. And, uh, that's all I had at this point, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up as well. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. Um, Ms. Parker, I just wanted to thank you for applying for that position. Um, and, and just to be fully disclosing, uh, Ms. Parker and I did have a telephone conversation. And based on that conversation and the application, I think Ms. Parker would make an excellent representative on the library commission. Thank you very much, and thank you for applying.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Moore. I'd also like to say, um, to, um, Councilmember Deloso, I really appreciate his offer for, um, context and background regarding the library and the structure of this, um, joint committee. Um, it's, it's a neat thing that you put in place so that the little city of Cattati has a voice on the library. Great, thank you. Um, and yes, I want to echo my fellow councilmembers and thank you very much for applying. And, um, it's great to see some civic involvement. And, um, I've been on the, um, library advisory board, uh, for a while. I'm not a, not a voting member, but I'm, I attend and just sort of, uh, give them updates and get updates from them about how things are going. And it's just been amazing how well they've been able to adapt to the current restrictions. So, um, anyway, well, I'm very excited. Um, let's see, I don't see any other councilmembers with hands up. Since it's an action item, um, I will pause briefly and we'll check and see if there's any public comment on this item. So Lauren, if you could check, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. Any of our attendees would like to make a comment, please use your raised hand icon or dial star nine. Mayor Skelman, there are no raised hands.
Okay, great. So, it looks like the first order of business is, um, I would like to officially nominate, uh, Rachel Parker to be, to represent on the Sonoma County Library Commission, uh, the city of Cattati.
Madam Mayor, uh, this is Councilmember Landman. I'd be happy to move that we approve your nomination of Rachel Parker, Rachel Parker, for the Sonoma County Library Commission as Cattati's representative.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I'd be happy to second that motion.
Okay, terrific. So we have a motion and a second on the nomination. Uh, Lauren, would you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skelman?
Yes. Congratulations, Mrs. Parker. Um, I hope you enjoy your time on the library commission and, uh, definitely feel free to reach out, uh, to Councilmember Deloso as well as any of the rest of us if you have any questions along the way. All right, with that, we'll move on to item B, uh, discussion of proposed merger of REMIF. For that, we will turn to our city manager, Damian Obit, for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight is JPA night. Um, and the next JPA we'll be talking about is REMIF, which is the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. Um, I'd like to say at the outset that, um, with us tonight is Amy Northam. He's the general manager, uh, for REMIF, who is also available, um, to fill in any holes in my presentation, but also answer any questions that the council might have as, uh, as we get to the end of the presentation. And, um, I'll also just, um, apologize that attached to the packet is, um, is the, uh, REMIF, the proposed REMIF Joint Powers Authority Agreement, the amended one, as well as amended bylaws. Or that was the intent, but for some reason the, uh, JPA got included twice and the bylaws isn't there. Um, also attached is the CIRA, um, which is the new merged JPA that we'll be talking about. Um, their, that JPA agreement as well as the, uh, bylaws. Both of those have been, um, recently, as of September twenty-fourth of this year, um, the amended REMIF, JPA, and bylaws were approved by the REMIF Board as well as the CIRA, JPA, and bylaws, um, was also approved by the CIRA Board at the same meeting in September. Tonight, we're not, um, we're not gonna, this is a no-action item, but it's really just to, um, get one up to speed with, uh, what's been going on with the merger discussions and an opportunity to ask any questions. Um, we will have a future meeting where we come back and consider, as a council, um, adopting the revised, the updated revised REMIF, JPA, and bylaws, as well as the proposed new CIRA, JPA, and bylaws. So, um, the city, I think, as all the councilmembers know, is a member of an insurance pool, which is, uh, what we call Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. So, the city of Cattati was, um, one of the founding members of the pool back in nineteen seventy-six. And, um, uh, I think as you also know, uh, Vice Mayor Moore is the primary representative to REMIF and, um, I am the designated alternate. So, um, Vice Mayor Moore sits on the REMIF Board and, um, of course, I'm the alternate if he's unable to make it for some reason. I also sit on the executive committee and the, um, transition committee that was formed to begin discussions with another JPA by the name of ParsAC, um, to merge and create what is now called, um, CIRA. So, anyway, I'll dig into all this in a minute. Um, REMIF, this is a little way of a little bit more background, is a public entity insurance pool representing fifteen small to medium-sized cities primarily in, uh, the north coast of California area. And, um, originally it was formed in nineteen seventy-six to provide workers' compensation insurance coverage in response to, um, the increasingly unaffordable commercial rates at that time. Coverage was later expanded in the nineteen eighties to include liability and other services. And, um, more recently in the last, I think, maybe five years, uh, we also added a self-funded insurance program as well under REMIF. So, um, that's a snapshot of REMIF. Um, the other JPA that we have been talking with is, um, very similar in terms of its mission and its culture to REMIF in that they are, um, a group, um, a risk-sharing pool, um, of mostly municipalities in California. And it's, uh, the name of that group is the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California, otherwise known as ParsAC. And, um, they, um, they are comprised of, I believe it's thirty-six entities, uh, mostly cities. I guess there's a fire district in there as well. It was formed in nineteen eighty-six, um, to provide liability coverage in response to insurance crises that eliminated, eliminated commercial coverage for cities. So this is kind of a, it seems to be a cyclic, uh, issue where insurance rates get out of control and, um, cities have to look to other, um, other solutions to provide coverage. And, um, this coverage for ParsAC was expanded in nineteen ninety-two to include workers' comp and other services, and other lines have been added as well. Um, so both ParsAC and REMIF provide a pooled liability program, pooled workers' compensation program, and coverage for, um, group purchase of property. Um, the Board of Directors, public officials, error and omissions, auto physical damage, special events, bonds, cyber liability, and other ancillary benefits. Um, as I mentioned earlier, REMIF is a bit unique in that, um, at least among the two pools, in that we have a, um, uh, a medical health, um, insurance program. So both pools, um, are very similar in their culture. They're met, uh, member-owned. That's sort of the nature of a joint powers authority. They're member-owned, member-governed, and they're, um, driven and only exist to serve the member organi- member cities that are in the organization. Um, so REMIF is, uh, is smaller than, um, than ParsAC. REMIF is, like I mentioned earlier, primarily the north coast of California. Um, ParsAC is throughout the state. They have some members in Southern California, um, some in the central part of California, and also some in the REMIF area as well. I think one of the closer ones to us is, um, St. Helena, which is a, um, a ParsAC member. And attached as well, as I, as well as the GPAs and, um, bylaws that are attached, I also, um, uh, through REMIF have attached a, um, FAQ that talks about the, um, proposed merger to create CIRA as well as, um, sort of a matrix of, um, programs. And the similarities or differences between the two, between REMIF and ParsAC. So, um, you know, given the similarities and the, I think the desire to, um, uh, well, the benefits that would be, that could be afforded to a larger pool that would have, um, greater negotiating power and then just general, um, sort of a general improvement in stability because of, uh, just a larger number of members. REMIF and ParsAC were exploring, initially it was exploring, um, working together on programs. And, um, that exploration eventually led to, um, a proposal to merge the two organizations. And, um, uh, what ended up happening after, um, the transition committee was formed, and there'd been probably a year of discussions, is it was determined that, um, the merger would be, um, essentially renaming ParsAC and moving it into, moving REMIF and ParsAC into a CIRA, which was the preferred alternative for, um, a variety of reasons. And it's, um, and it's believed based on extensive work now in the other transition committee, we're working through a lot of, um, a lot of issues. Most of the coverages are very similar. Um, there are some differences that have been, um, discussed in great detail, um, primarily by the transition committee, but also, um, by the respective boards of both GPAs. And, um, uh, and so where we are now is, um, I mentioned that, that the REMIF Board of Directors has, um, approved the JPA amendment to REMIF and also approved the proposed CIRA, JPA, and bylaws. And, um, if, uh, if the, if, assuming the merger goes forward, it would be effective July first, twenty twenty-one, um, creating a new, the new pool, which is CIRA. The one thing I, um, the one thing I will say, because there's always a transition period, um, the general plan is that, um, both pools would merge and as of July twenty, uh, July twenty twenty-one, ideally the, uh, liability, property, and workers' compensation programs would be combined and then moved forward under a new umbrella that's called CIRA. Um, for REMIF, we have the health insurance program. The health insurance program would still, um, would not merge initially, so it would still retain, be retained within the REMIF pool. And, um, both of the prior pools, so REMIF and ParsAC would continue to exist as well as CIRA, uh, for some period of time because any, any claims received prior to July one, twenty twenty, would still be managed by the, um, the prior, uh, risk pools. So in other words, uh, they would have to manage those claims until they are resolved. And any new claims after July one, twenty twenty-one would go, um, into and be managed by CIRA. The staff of both organizations would be, um, combined into a, um, into that new entity. But, um, we, you know, we'd have the CIRA board meetings and then we would have board meetings for, um, or at least votes for, uh, REMIF-specific items and ParsAC-specific items, um, having to do with, uh, claims and that sort of thing prior to the merger. And, um, I think the general idea or the general consensus at this time is that, uh, liability and property claims tend to resolve fairly quickly. So, um, probably within the three to ti- five-year timeframe, those claims will largely be worked through, um, in both pools. And, um, uh, workers' compensation is the one with the longer tail. So, uh, workers' compensation claims can be sixty years or longer in some cases. So workers' compensation claims can be 60 years or longer in some cases. So that will definitely be the longer claim to manage. And, uh, I, I assume that once CIRA is formed and it's beginning to run as an independent entity, at some point, probably in that three- to five-year timeframe, I would imagine there will be discussions with Parsac and REMIF about what kind of tail claims still exist in the, in the former GPAs and if it would make sense to still separately administer the former GPAs or if it would make sense to start pulling in some of those claims just for long-term management, particularly in the workers' comp side of things. But that's just my speculation, right? You know, it's my assumption of how it will, how the merger will eventually fold in the, the prior programs. And then the health insurance program for REMIF, I understand that some of the Parsac members probably have some interest in joining that. But given all the moving parts, just to form CIRA with the liability, property and workers' comp programs, that one has been delayed and, like I said, but will be retained by REMIF in the short term at least. And then I imagine there will be future discussions of the CIRA Board about, and the REMIF Board, about if they wanted to expand the health insurance program. But that's really not on the table right now. And then, uh, the last thing I will just say on the financial side of things is that, even though, you know, the intent of the merger isn't really to save, save costs, but it's intended to provide a more, more robust and stable pool of like entities that will just provide better stability, better service to all the members. And a just more robust JPA. And while cost savings may, may eventually be realized, it's not the primary goal of the merger. So, uh, just wanted to mention that in case you have any questions about that. And then, um, also, one last thing about just the mechanics of the merger is that although the REMIF and then the Parsac Boards will also be, well, the REMIF Board has already approved the amended REMIF JPA agreement and bylaws, which are intended to manage sort of the tail of the remaining claims in REMIF. Parsac has a similar task, both with the former part, what will be eventually the former Parsac, JPA and approving the CIRA, JPA and bylaws. The, the hope, I guess, is that, you know, most of the, most of the members of both GPAs will, will agree that, and in so far, this has been the case with the, at least with the boards of both entities, is that the individual members seem to be, to my knowledge at least, seem to be very positive about the merger. And we'll be moving forward to that. If for some reason, any individual member of Parsac or REMIF doesn't want to, doesn't want to join CIRA, then they would have to look for coverage of those insurance lines, either by joining a different JPA or by finding it on the commercial market, which in either case probably isn't a, at least in my opinion, a good option. So with that, I would be, actually, let me first, first of all, pitch it to Amy to see if I've missed anything that would be worth mentioning to the, to the council and the public here. And then I'll turn it over to the council for questions. So Amy, did I miss anything?
I don't think so. Thank you. You did a great job.
All right. Thanks. All right. So then that's, that's it. And both Amy and I are available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. And I see a few hands up with questions for, for you guys. So Councilmember Landman, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions for staff. First one's probably pretty general. So REMIF's currently 15 members, Parsac 44. We are looking at a combined board size of about 59 potential seats. That's become, become fairly cumbersome. I'm wondering how much thought has been put into that. I just put it forward as kind of a, a concern. That takes us certainly to the thing that the Executive Committee become very important. And I do note the requirements, the initial requirements about executive committee compensation. So I think those are great. So I wanted to ask one, if we're confident that the board this size will be able to work well or if the executive committee will really have to be the managing hand there. And then secondly, a deeper question for staff and Ms. Northam in particular. Do we believe with this that we will receive the same level of attention and service from CIRA that we've had through REMIF? Or is there any concern about us potentially as newer members and being roughly a third of the size of the organization we're joining, that we might get lost and shuffled? I ask that, I see there's been some effort certainly in putting together the negotiations for the JPA. But having had to see our city use the services of REMIF several times and been rather pleased with the service that they put together for us, I, I'd want to make sure we're able to keep that. So if you could speak to that, those two things for me a little bit, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Landman. So, and you're exactly right with respect to the Executive Committee. Basically, the, the arrangement will have to be, because of the size of the board, that the board will certainly have like budget approval and some, some functions like that. But a lot of the operational management of the, of the JPA will happen at the executive committee level with, with a new JPA. It's just the only way, I think, that would really be functional. And then, and there was some initial thought in terms of when the, when the two merge, that we have a certain number of seats, at least for the first election cycles. And then, you know, I think as, you know, as we get more familiar with each other and, and work through that, then, you know, then there will be, you know, there will be certainly, it won't be REMIF and Parsac tagged executive committee members necessarily, but trying to create some equity with size and maybe geographic areas, but not like necessarily REMIF versus Parsac. Because at that point, theory, right, we're all CIRA and we're all pulling in the same direction. And with respect to the level of service, I, I'm sure Amy has something to say about this too. But I, I will just say that, uh, in REMIF and from what I've observed in Parsac, in Parsac, for example, they have, I think it's 34 or 36 members. And they have, they have the City of Avalon as one of their members, which is like teeny tiny. And everything I've seen, at least, is just going off my own personal experience, both as a member of REMIF and Amy's responsiveness to any issues that come up for Cattati, regardless of our size within the, within the member group. And also with Parsac and the range of city sizes that they have and people that I've worked with on the Transition Committee, St. Helena and some of the really smaller cities, they seem very happy with the level of service that they've gotten. So I, I don't expect the responsiveness to be an issue, even with the merge. I think, in fact, that by combining the programs and having, kind of pooling more resources, it would just provide more ability to provide program support and, and training opportunities. Especially, that's especially important for small cities that don't necessarily have the bandwidth, the staff to organize or the resources to fund. Some training and standardization of processes and things like that, which I think a combined organization would probably be even better at than REMIF is able to do now. But I don't, I don't know, Amy, if you had anything to add to that?
Damien, no, thank you. I, I really appreciate that. The only thing I would like to add is that I, I, I agree, I do not anticipate the level of service dropping. I will become an employee of CIRA and will be available to the REMIF cities just as I have before. The, one of the advantages is Parsac has a loss control slash risk manager with, with great experience. He worked for this little company, you may have heard of them, called Google before. So he has a lot of in-depth loss control experience and training experience that the REMIF members would be able to tap into. So I certainly would hope that the level of service would not decrease whatsoever. And if that's the case, you need to have a conversation with Damien because my job will be on the line. But we also will have an increased services available to REMIF members through, through that Parsac employee that does the loss control. I think that's going to be a wonderful resource for us.
Well, this is helpful for me to hear. I appreciate it. Obviously, the bigger pool, the greater resources, clearly an improvement. The only concern is maintaining that existing level of excellence that we generally receive, I, I feel, from REMIF over the years. Because we all know there are advantages to size, but sometimes it's only up to a certain point. So it sounds to me there's some clarity, this is still a good size for us. So thank you for sharing that with me. Appreciate it.
All right. And Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Please go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. Damien brought up the long-tail lines of workers' comp and, in some cases, liability. I guess, I'm glad you brought that up and I'm glad people were thinking about that because, you know, as you pointed out, it could go on for 60 years. And I was curious as to if we had any information around how many claims that we're actually generally dealing with in both organizations? And would it be worthwhile to have something in there that rather than just, oh, well, maybe we'll look at it, something a little bit more definitive in there that says that we will look at it in five years? Or, or, you know, some, some set time? Because there is a cost associated with sort of keeping these separate organizations out there and keeping those claims running. You, you don't, as you pointed out, it's not necessarily that we're trying, the goal isn't cost savings, but at some point, you know, keeping multiple organizations going is kind of a cost drag. So I'm hoping that we can get a little bit of feedback on that. The one thing that was in here that I was very pleased with is, which sometimes happens with mergers, is that the merger of the organizations, that there will be no loss of positions, especially, you know, in these times. Hate to see, you know, more jobs being eliminated. So I was glad to see in the FAQ that, that there's a plan for, you know, how to transition folks to the new CIRA organization. So those were really my questions and concerns at this point in time.
Thanks, Councilmember Harvey. So I'll take this, I'll take a start at it. So the liability claims and the property claims, I think the expectation, I, I don't have numbers. I mean, perhaps Amy might have some numbers there. But the expectation generally is that within the three-to-five-year time horizon, the liability and property claims will be largely, if not entirely, resolved and won't need to be dealt with after that. Workers' comp, you know, I think there's always a, a desire to, you know, settle and release those and not have to manage them for a generation or longer. But I think the reality is sometimes that happens in some, for some claims. And, you know, I, I don't think there's a specific trigger to, to, to discuss it. But I think when you have your time, I mean, you're going to have the former REMIF and former Parsac members on the CIRA Board. And I think in the three-to-five-year time horizon, they're probably going to start thinking, well, does it make sense financially to, to, to maintain REMIF and Parsac as separate entities when the claims have reduced to the point where it would just make more sense to fold it into CIRA's portfolio and manage it in the long run? I, I think that's just a natural evolution. That's why I don't think there's a specific trigger in the, in the JPA agreement. Just will, I think, become apparent during that timeframe. The, the one, the one unknown, of course, on the REMIF side, is what happens with the health insurance plan. Like I said, there's no, there's no immediate plan to do anything with it and REMIF will still be managing that. But I expect it'll be a subject of discussion in, you know, the next two to three years probably about what, what, how to move that forward and what we want to do there on the health insurance side of things.
But, but Damien, if there's no plan for any of that, REMIF staying separately is REMIF to, to deal with those claims? And Parsac staying separate to deal with those claims? There's no incentive to kind of wrap those up? Yes, there's the new CIRA, but they're going to have their own world that they're dealing with and not necessarily, unless what you're saying is they're, they're the same board on, on all, all of them to be able to make those kind of decisions. I could imagine that folks, you know, kind of would hold on to their little territories if there's not something that says that it should be looked at.
It's, yeah, sorry. So it's the same, I mean, the CIRA Board, we made up of the same, so the Parsac and the REMIF members would come together and sit together on the CIRA Board? So it's all the same people? And if, if you're, you know, I say City of Cattati and you're, you're funding the administration of REMIF and you're also funding the administration of CIRA? And same with the Parsac members, right? If you're funding the administration of Parsac and you're also funding the administration of CIRA, I think you're going to have a common interest in trying to wind down Parsac and REMIF and, when it makes financial sense to do that.
So if I understand you correctly, the board members that are on CIRA are also either on REMIF or Parsac? So separate REMIF Board, you know what I'm saying is that if it was completely separate people, they might want to stay that way? And, you know, yes, CIRA, you go off and do your own thing and yes, you move forward. But they might not have that same impetus to do that if it's different, if it's different people.
Right, right. Yeah, absolutely. So there, I mean, there's a, I guess there's a chance that a new city joins CIRA and they don't have an interest in either Parsac or REMIF. But the vast majority of, of the members on the CIRA Board will be either REMIF or Parsac members also. So, you know, I think it's in everyone's financial interest to, you know, as soon as it makes sense to wind down the former GPAs and administer just a single one. Because, you know, you're, you're potentially having to manage parallel programs that are doing the same thing. And you know, at some point, those, those lines, sort of the cost-benefit lines will cross and you're going to want to, you know, pull. I, I would think it'd be a natural evolution that you want to pull any remedying claims into CIRA just for efficiency sake. And, and, and like you said, Susan, Councilmember Harvey, sorry, that you would be, you know, you, the members of the CIRA Board have that, have that goal because they don't want to fund both, you know? They're the same members.
Yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we change something in REMIF such that those workers' comp claims are not being handled in-house? They're actually being managed through a contract? Didn't that change? Oh, okay. So that also may help at some, at some point, that also may help.
Yeah. So we, yeah, a couple of years ago, what you were calling is that we moved, REMIF moved to a third-party administrator for workers' comp claims.
Right.
The name of the group is Athens. And so that's, that's who we use to manage the claims. And Parsac has a similar process, right? So that's, I mean, that's all part of the discussions with the merger, you know? That, you know, went for CIRA, you know, who's going to manage CIRA's worker comp claims? Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all my questions right now.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Delawso, you've got your hand up as well, so go ahead with your questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. Damien, just a, really only one question. And that is when this does, this JPA does come back to the council for some kind of a vote, assuming that the 50 or whatever members, other members will have taken a look at this and possibly made some editorial changes, it would be really nice. look at this and possibly made some editorial changes, it would be really nice if it could come back with sort of track changes, so council can then kind of compare what we have in front of us tonight and what will be seen in the future. Sadly, I mean, I won't be part of that "we," but I just, I wanted to bring that up because I think that's important. Because there are a couple of features that are really good. I love the, you know, one vote for each member. That's not always an easy thing to get into JPAs, we know. And the public financial audit that's going to be done. I think there's some really good features in here, and I, I think this JPA, granted, it's been edited and revised a few times here, looks to be in pretty darn good shape. But I would just say, that might be the easiest way for a future council to take some kind of an action on this item.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Delasso. So tonight actually is your lucky night because all the individual Remif members are going to have to vote on this before December 15th. So...
Oh, Larry.
Yeah, although I will say that both, I believe, well, definitely the Remif board has already approved these. So as far as I know, these are static GPAs and bylaws and not subject to editing at this point.
That's awesome.
And I believe the same is true of the ParsAC members, that they have a similar, in terms of at least the CIRA JPA and bylaws, they have a, they have the same version we have, and should be all approving that. Or, I mean, if they have serious heartburn with it, then, then they would not move forward into CIRA and would have to find insurance elsewhere.
Great, okay, that's very good to hear. I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up as well, so go ahead with your questions, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Last but not least, I think that this process is kind of a natural evolution of where we've been with Remif over the years. We've kind of had to drag Remif into the 21st century, kicking and screaming. In some areas, they were excellent, in other areas, they did not necessarily have the wherewithal to do some of the things that they could have done. And a merger with ParsAC like this would allow them to have a greater economies of scales for technology and administration, and as Amy indicated, loss control features and things like that. So I think this is a great idea. It's taken a while, and will take a while until it comes to full fruition, but I'm really excited about it. I think we've been blessed to have Ms. Northam as a director there. When she came in, she's really worked toward modernizing Remif. And then if this is the final collaboration of that, I think it's going to be terrific. When you can get more numbers into a pool, typically, you're going to spread that risk at a greater level and reduce some of that exposure. We may look at that down the road with the health plan, but right now, it's kind of off the table because currently the health plan is doing very well, and that's, as you know, self-funded. So I think kudos will go out to Ms. Northam, and I really think that the direction that this is going is going to be a very positive thing. And also, it will allow for, you know, succession planning and just greater shock-loss absorbing ability in case we have some of those claims that come in, liabilities and things like that, some of our neighbors to the north. So I think this will be an exciting thing. So, thank you, Mayor Skilman.
Yeah, and I, I will just say, sorry to interrupt here, but thank you, Vice Mayor Moore. And I will, I'll just second what Vice Mayor Moore said, is Remif was behind the, behind the ball on many, in several areas before Amy was hired as the general manager of Remif, and she has very rapidly brought it up, you know, in light speed to current practices in almost all areas. So, you know, we're def, we're definitely very lucky to have her as the general manager for Remif.
And if I may, we also are in an extremely difficult insurance market. You know, pandemics and, you know, significant fires and things like that really make it difficult to obtain the appropriate insurance coverages for anything that's above our retention levels. So having a larger pool is going to be more enticing for some of those markets that we may be able to tap into.
Okay, great. Thank you for the discussion. And so I know it's not an action item, but it's just going to be a discussion, but I would ask Moore, if he could check with the attendees and see if anybody has public comment on our proposed merger? Thank you, Mayor Skilman. At this time, I see no raised hands. Okay, great. And I'm not seeing any verbiage in there about motions and everything, so it just looks like we've had a really good, robust discussion and conversation, and questions were answered. So thank you very much to Amy Northam and Damian for putting that proposal together, that presentation together, I should say. And look forward to seeing how that all flushes out as we move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be back soon. And I know, Amy, any parting thoughts?
No, thank you, Mayor. I greatly appreciate the time and allowing us to present, and thank you for the accolades, too. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I think she's getting tired of us complimenting her, but anyway.
We can take it back.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And that will move on to item 12 of our city managers' report, and I will turn it back over to Damian Ovid.
You, Mayor, members of the city council. So to real quick check in on the, on PSPS and fire risk, there is additional forecasted high winds again tonight, and PG&E continues to implement the public safety power shut-off in parts of Sonoma County to reduce fire risk. Khatari so far has not been subjected to a PSPS during this event and is not expected to be impacted at this time. Some good news on the, on the grant side of the House. So the police department bought a $28,000 grant from the California Office of Traffic Safety, OTS grant. And this grant is intended to help fund efforts to reduce deaths and injuries on the roads in the state, and being a grant recipient, specifically Khatari roads. So there's a one-year grant for the 2021 fiscal year, which runs from October 1st, 2020 to September 30, 2021. And the grant will help fund a variety of traffic safety programs, including patrols with an emphasis on impaired driving, so drug, drug and alcohol, impaired driving prevention, awareness and education regarding the hands-free cell phone law, so don't talk while you're, don't talk on your handset while you're driving, education of traffic rights for bicyclists and pedestrians, awareness and education of the primary causes of crashes, which is typically excess speed, failure to yield, yeah, yields, failure to yield at stop signs and signals and proper turning or lane changes. It also helps fund community education, presentations on traffic safety for distracted driving, DUI, speed, bicycle and pedestrian safety, helps us with collaborative efforts with neighboring agencies on traffic safety priorities, and also officer training and/or recertification on the standard field sobriety test, advanced roadside, impaired driving enforcement and drug, and being a, training on being a drug recognition expert. So anyway, good news there. We have dedicated grant for help in some of those efforts that we're already undertaking, but we can accelerate a bit with that funding. For Public Works, the 2020 Streets Project, the, as you know, we did the first phase, the overall project, because of the uncertainties around COVID, we moved forward with awarding and constructing the first phase of the project, which, as everyone knows now, because you can see out there on the streets, was the named streets around the inner ring of the hub, as well as part of Valparaiso there at West Sierra. So it's substantially completed at this time with only minor kind of punch list items left to do. And a note that, in addition to some of the striping touch-ups that we have to do, we're going to be doing the, some stop bars around the fire station keep clear area on East Khatari, which has been something that's been requested for a while, as well as we're still working with Caltrans to get the final issuance of the encroachment permit to put in the street paint and side edge for the stop at West School Street and West Sierra. So that is coming soon as well. The most challenging part of this project with the outer hub streets is that they are some of the oldest streets in town, and so they had some shallow utilities and often utilities that were a little bit more delicate. So fortunately, it all went well, and we have some brand-new streets. And we're able to do this project because of Measure G. Also, the West School Street Pathway Project is complete now, and it's ready to be used by walkers, and I actually have seen many people already using that pathway, so that's good. We're planning to put out a fast walk Facebook video soon, the full length of the pathway improvements. So look at Facebook for that soon. This project was also funded by Measure G and also Community Development Block, Community Development Block grant. For our Administrative Services Department, Angela, Angela mentioned earlier that they are doing an awesome job, and they not only won the PAFR, which we reported on in the last council meeting, they've also won an award for the CAFR. It's our second annual awards for both of those programs. And this is the, the CAFR is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That's the, basically the annual financial audit. Kind of on steroids, the CAFR version is the gold standard for that, that not only provides the basic financials, which is the requirement, but also goes above and beyond that and provides, you know, forecasts and historical information, and basically everything you would ever want to know about the city's financing or finances. And the PAFR, just in shorthand, is a condensed version of the important points of the CAFR that is in a very condensed readable format for the community if they're interested, and they don't have to have an accounting degree to read it. So anyway, two very well-deserved awards for Angela Neal and the other Angela in that department, who worked hard to put all that together. They've also been working on really trying to implement, or they've already implemented, but expanding online bill pay and setting up where you can create payments. So that's, that's available, as you guys know. And it's just, you can visit the City of Khatari website, and if you click the fast button for "How Do I?", and you can select "Pay My Water Bill," and it takes you right there. You can also do phone payments by credit card 24/7 as well, simply by calling the automated number, which is 833-282-0825. And again, something that I think everyone here knows, but water service still is not, we're still continuing the policy of not disconnecting any water service due to non-payment during the city pro-plan for local emergency. But we, we do encourage those that need assistance to apply for a payment plan, and that could include both a short-term extension or an alternate payment arrangement. Either one is completely fine. The applications are available online, and if you have any questions about your bill or payment arrangements, you can always contact the city, Admin Services Department at 665-3631, or email us at water@khatari-city.org. Only Recreation, past Friday night, we hosted our second sold-out drive-in movie event at the St. Joseph's Park and Ride. We showed Hocus Pocus at that movie night, and it went off without a hitch, and everyone had a great time. And we are happy to have the Wingman food truck there, as well as Lucky Pop kettle corn, provide food and popcorn for purchases as well. We're offering another drive-in on November 20th, showing Ratatouille, and again on December 18th, showing Elf. So tickets are available online through the rec desk, which is the recreation page on the city website, and both events are expected to sell out. So advise everyone to get tickets early if you are interested in going to the drive-in movie. This Thursday, for Halloween events, we're going to be doing a parade through Khatari for our Trick or Treat Roadshow, where we're bringing a Halloween parade to Khatari families to hand out candy to children. There's still space to sign up for this free event, but we're closing registration on Wednesday. So sign up tonight if you'd like to partake in the fun. And then on, just continuing the Halloween theme on Saturday, we've partnered with 20 Khatari businesses to host Khatari Candyland Outdoor Trick or Treat event in this event. This free event is open to all, and families are able to trick or treat outside of participating businesses to grab candy or show off, and show off their costumes. Masks will be required, as well as other health order guidelines to provide some of the safe and fun Halloween celebration. And it takes place, as I mentioned, on Saturday from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM throughout Khatari. On our Facebook page, we have a map of participating businesses, and we'll be putting up a map shortly. And then finally, registration is currently open for Thanksgiving and winter break camps, where children will have an opportunity to spend their days off from school in a safe and fun environment with games, crafts, and more. Stay tuned for more in Pro on our upcoming holiday events. And if there's any questions about any of these events or programs, you can contact the Recreation Department, you can contact Ashley at the Recreation Department at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at khatarisuite.org. And as I mentioned, a lot of this information is also on the city's website and also Facebook page. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I see Councilmember Harvey. Go ahead with your questions, please.
Damian, you mentioned that a grant for safety, in particular, you mentioned bicycle safety. I was wondering if there were any opportunities maybe for us to work together with, say, the Bicycle Coalition to maybe put on some sort of bicycle safety seminars or something like that, maybe in conjunction with the Recreation Department, or, I'm not trying to lay out anything specific, but I was just wondering if there might be any opportunities for us to do that? Because I do see a lot of folks out riding bikes and not necessarily in the safest of manners.
Certainly, we can check into that. I know that's one of the allowable uses. I don't know that, I don't know that we've programmed any specific things yet for it, so I certainly can talk to the chief about that, see what's possible.
Yeah, we might want to reach out to the Coalition, and they might already have, you know, something that they've prepared before that we may be able to get them to, you know, actually do for members of the community. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, the Coalition does do trainings as well, so...
Yeah, my thought.
Yeah, well, the chief and I will talk about it and connect with them and see, see what's available.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. And Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Damian, I'm not sure if you would know, or maybe even Angela this quarter might know, are there, are we dragging a lot of people on the water bills, or is it just a few?
I don't have an exact count. Angela, I don't know if you have a more current number of accounts that are unpaid right now?
I will have a more current number come tomorrow. We're sending out new bills starting tomorrow, so we're currently processing it, and they'll be out tomorrow morning. We'll all have my final count of what's still outstanding before the next bills go out. We are, we do have significantly more than we had last year, but it's not, we usually don't have very many. So where, I think last month, we were about 40. Usually, we're about 20. Balances are reducing, specifically in businesses that are more closed for a period of time, so they're not using the same amount of water volume. So even though the individual number of accounts might be increasing, the balances are somewhat less as well. So it's a multifaceted answer that we can actually maybe provide more in-depth information on that in the future.
Thank you very much. And that was my only question. Thanks. Thank you very much. And that was my only question. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for that information. And, um, I'm not seeing any more hands up. So thank you very much, um, City Manager Obit for your report. Um, and we'll move on to item 13, City Council Member Reports. Um, I'll go first just because, um, I only have one very quick one to report out. Um, we had our, uh, library advisory board meeting, um, via Zoom on, uh, October 20th. Uh, unfortunately there were not enough members to form a quorum. Um, and so I wanted to just put it out there. If anybody else is interested in joining the, um, Friends of the Library or any of those organizations, they definitely could use some additional, um, public participation. Um, and, uh, so we just did, everybody gave updates and, um, the Friends of the Library was talking about trying to do curbside, um, uh, book sales and things like that. So, um, they're, they're trying to keep going as much as possible given the current circumstances. Um, and then they were very interested in, um, our program about, um, purchasing tents rather than just renting them and then allowing businesses to use them. And then, um, hopefully once this is over, God willing, then we will be able to rent them out for events and things like that. Um, so just so you're on alert, Roner Park, uh, mentioned, the council member who was on the call mentioned they may try to steal that same idea, but we started it. So it's on the record. Anyway, I'll look and see if any of my other colleagues, um, on the council have reports. I see Councilmember Delasto. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Um, really only one. Uh, on the 22nd of October, a monthly AG and Open Space Advisory Committee meeting. And, um, for the first time in probably over eight years I've been on that group, um, it was a mildly contentious meeting. Um, the main topic that we had discussed was the future of AG and Open Space. As I believe I mentioned at our last council meeting, General Manager Bill King is going to be stepping down after about 11 years and some remarkable accomplishments, none the least of which is bringing on, uh, an incredibly qualified staff. And, you know, I, I read in the newspaper on a Thursday that the Board of Supervisors, who's the ultimate boss of the general manager for AG and Open Space, the Board of Supervisors already had three names that they were going to interview for the interim position. Well, that seemed a bit odd, um, not having heard anything about that. So I promptly sent an email to the five members of the board and to county council and to the county administrator, um, and outlining my concerns with doing that, that it wasn't much of an open process, uh, the fact that they neglected seemingly to not even, um, interview an internal candidate. And there are two very qualified and one who actually has expressed interest to the board. So I did get a call back from a couple of Board of Supervisor members. And, um, lo and behold, when they had their closed session meeting on the following Tuesday after this Thursday article in the Press Democrat, they did not make a selection. They did interviews, but they did not make a selection for an interim. So at our, um, advisory committee meeting, I had brought up that we should, as an advisory committee to AG and Open Space District, that we should write a letter, which I'd be happy to draft. Um, we, we had a long discussion, very good discussion. Many people agreed that these are issues that need to be brought to their attention. Yet when it came time, somebody had made a motion and I called for a second and I called for a second again. And then a third time I called for a second and there was just dead silence, even from the people who agreed we should write a letter. So I was quite confused and quite upset over that. So, um, bottom line is, you know, individual members from the advisory committee will write their own letters and send them to whom they seem fit. And again, all, this wasn't like a criticism letter. It was simply, please remember that this is an interim position and you should clearly outline a timeframe, like say four to six months. Because it takes time to do a national search for the permanent fill because AG and Open Space here in Sonoma County actually does have a national reputation. And, um, this is one of the highest paying jobs, this general manager position in the county as well. So all that said and done, uh, there's been additional emails that have gone on and, um, I'm still working on mine to send mine out. But it was, uh, it was a very interesting meeting that there was this level of silence, even though so many people, more than half of the people there had agreed. But when it came down to how many people were in favor of sending the letter, I think there was four out of 16 members. So, um, so that's what I had to report out and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for that report. And, uh, Councilmember Harvey, go ahead with your report, please.
Uh, this last couple of weeks seems to be a lot of little subcommittee things. Um, I don't know what that's all about. It must be just the time of year. But, um, I also attended the Waste Management Agency meeting last week. And the two items of interest to everyone is we put out, uh, we're putting out an RFP for, uh, waste characterization study. We typically do these about once every five years. So that RFP is going out. So next year we will get a waste characterization study, which helps us with knowing kind of what's out there in, um, you know, the stuff that's being sent to the landfill. So we can, um, look at what changes that we need to make to, um, make sure that we're moving things out of the landfill and into other methods. So we won't, unfortunately it takes a while. Uh, I, I couldn't believe it, but because they do a wet season and a dry season, um, study, we won't actually get the report until late next fall. But anyways, that will be happening. And then secondly, the, um, uh, Waste Management Agency is working on the five-year update to the countywide integrated waste management plan that COE WIMP, um, for all of us. And that's ongoing. And then today, um, I attended a meeting, um, subcommittee meeting from the Santa Rosa, uh, groundwater basin plane. And, um, I was selected to be on the group that's for all of the planes to look at outreach. And so we're working with a consultant to, um, do a survey to, uh, rural residents with wells, um, to kind of get input. And then after that, um, input is received, then they will have some focus groups to see kind of where we need to go to get everybody kind of moving in the right direction, um, for, um, groundwater, uh, sustainability plans. So more to come on that, but that was really pretty interesting. So that is all I have to report this week.
Okay. Thank you for that report. And, um, that looks like that's everybody that's got their hand up. So I will move on to item 14, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. So I'll ask, uh, Lauren to check in with our attendees, see if anybody has comments on agenda items, uh, listed on today's that are non-action items.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Marjorie Crumpshear, go ahead.
Good evening. Um, I, uh, several things here. Congratulations, number one, on both of the grants that the city received. Um, uh, I, that's wonderful. Another big thank you for all of the activities that Catati holds for families and individuals. Um, and I just have a quick question. Are there age limits on the trick-or-treating downtown? And I'm saying that with a smile on my face. Um, earlier in the meeting, Vice Mayor John Moore referred to, uh, an ad hoc committee agenda item as a possibility during the brief dis- uh, mention of the survey or poll, as we understand it will be. Um, thank you. We at Core really do want to show you what we are thinking about, what we, um, have researched, um, and we would like to present that information at a city council meeting. Um, so I will be getting in touch with, I'm not sure, Damian perhaps, or Ms. Skilman, um, or Mr. Moore maybe, to see how we can get on an agenda. But thank you, sir, for that mention, um, because we are ready and willing to, um, to share with you. Um, and I want to end with a little quote from, uh, a female actor because I think it's really relevant. Courage is fear that has said its prayers. Thank you.
Laura Sparks, go ahead.
Thank you. I would also like to thank, uh, Vice Mayor Moore for, um, bringing up putting the ad hoc committee on the agenda. I also just wanted to let you know that, uh, last week it was announced that Santa Rosa Junior College, uh, the Board of Trustees, which is a Brown Act body, is going to be forming an SRJC Ad Hoc Racial Justice Committee, sort of similar to what we're do- hoping to do here. Um, so that might provide some kind of model to look at, how they're doing it. I think they're going to have 16 people on the board, including three, on, on the ad hoc committee, including three members of the Board of Trustees. So I'm really excited to hear you, um, possibly putting this on the agenda soon. Thank you.
Mayor Skilman, that will do for public comment.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for the public comments. Um.
Okay, so, before you, uh, before you adjourn, adjourn, I, I will just, uh, a couple of things real quick. Um, there, uh, there is no age limit on trick-or-treating. So, uh, everyone's encouraged to come on down. And, um, if, uh, uh, if Marjorie would like to connect with me, um, we'll, we'll talk. So we'll be talking. I'll talk to her this week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, I'll check in with Lauren briefly, see if there was any information received after the agenda was posted. Nothing further. Okay. Well, with that, I will, uh, adjourn the meeting at 8:43 PM. Thank you all so much for your attendance. And, um, I hope that everybody stays safe and healthy and, uh, enjoys the holiday. And remember to set your clocks back on Saturday. All right. Take care, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.